United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll.
Alderman Tobin here. Alderman Jean Francois.
Oops, sorry. He's not here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderwoman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Coram is present, sir.
Provo minutes.
August 20th, 2024, please.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Alderman Witt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondence.
We have a town of Way We On a public hearing notice on a zoning and subdivision for proposed local law.
Received and filed. Okay, for the good of the city, if anyone would like to address the council, please step forward. You have three minutes. We have a new time clock, so as soon as it beeps at three minutes, please stop, say thank you, and move on to the next person. Anyone who'd like to address the council, please step forward.
This is Jason Niesman. I live in the city of Middletown. I'm back tonight because there are a few things that were said about the ethnic cleansing in occupied Palestine that need to be addressed. Firstly, for the folks who shared during the last meeting that as a small city, we shouldn't be concerned with international affairs. I must say that I find it astonishingly hypocritical that as I'm walking out of the meeting, I find a giant Ukrainian flag hanging from the center of the city hall. So I have to ask, which is it? Is it really the case that we don't get involved with international affairs? Or are we just picking and choosing what issues we care about? When the bodies of dead children in Gaza topple over 10 times that of Ukraine, I can't help but wonder why the international issue takes precedent. Meanwhile, the genocide of an entire people is being glossed over. Perhaps the mayor can speak on the reasoning as to why our city will take a stance on Ukraine and not Palestine. Also, I'd love for anyone speaking against the resolution, I've noticed that like several Zionists that showed up to the last meeting aren't here tonight. I'm curious about that. But I would like them to identify the literal verbiage within the resolution that we, you know, sent out that they take issue with because last meeting someone got up and they said that the resolution is one-sided and that it calls for the release of Palestinians and not Israelis, and that is straight-up false. So let's talk some facts. According to UNICEF, Gaza has the highest number of pediatric amputees in history. Fact, in the past 10 months, Israel has killed at least 169 journalists in Gaza, deliberately targeting them and their families. That's one journalist every two days over 10 months, as Middle East Eye reports. Fact, a new report by the Human Rights Watch details the detainment and torture of Palestinian health workers from Gaza, including testimonies describing torture, including rape and sexual abuse by Israeli forces, humiliation, beatings, forced stress positions, prolonged cuffing, and denial of medical care. Fact, Israel murdered hundreds of Chilean children in Gaza with precise sniper shots to the heart and temple. Fact, Euromed Human Rights Monitor reports that Israel has killed, injured, kidnapped, or disappeared 10% of Gaza's population. Fact, Global Education Cluster reports that Israel has bombed over 500 schools in Gaza since October 7th. And while Gaza is 60% smaller than Hiroshima, according to Euromed Rights Monitor, the fact of the matter is that Israel has dropped six times more bombs on it compared with that of the atomic bomb dropped by the US in World War II. So just real quick, I was just gonna say, please don't tell me this issue is not--
Again, we're gonna be respectful to everybody. Give you a time of three minutes, and that's all I ask for. When that buzzer goes off, time is up. Does anyone else wanna speak?
Hi, good evening, council members. My name is Amanda Crump, and I live in Middletown's 4th Ward. I would like to again urge the council to please pass a ceasefire resolution. There are a few things that I would like to address from the last meeting regarding the things that were said mainly by the mayor. First of all, we are not introducing this through any sort of organization. It is simply myself and my partner, Jason, as well as everyone else from our community who has organized and protested for an end to the violence. Like I said two weeks ago, through our ongoing protests on 211, we have built a community that I am proud of, and we all work together with the collective goal of liberation. In my last speech, I found it important to bring up the heckling that we have experienced, and the reason I did that was because I wanted to show an example of the viewpoints held by people who support Israel's war crimes, by the obscenities that they constantly scream at us and the way they attempt to sabotage our movement. However, I made a mistake because I did not mention the hundreds of people who drive by our protest and show their support. The mayor mentioned that the heckling I brought up is a representation of Middletown residents. However, I specifically said we protest on 211, which is the town of Walk Hill. I think we all know that many people from Orange County and even outside the county come to Walk Hill for many reasons, and the heckling I mentioned is not a fair representation of the residents of Middletown. I hope you all have had the chance to see the businesses that have put up our Middletown for Ceasefire posters in their window because that is a representation of Middletown. A week ago, we held our protests at Thrall Park instead of 211, and we had immense support from people driving by. I would also like to address the council members and the mayor because it was said that this issue is not for your form of government, and we should go to our congressmen and federal government. Many of us here, including myself, have played a part in speaking out in Washington DC, as well as outreach and speaking to Pat Ryan about this issue. Our government will not listen to us, and it is very difficult to speak directly with them, and that is why we are also coming to you, because you are our local government, and you do hold the power to be able to make a statement surrounding this issue, just as you have made a statement by hanging the Ukrainian flag from the city hall ceiling. You don't have to be an expert in foreign policy to tell our government to stop supplying weapons that kill children. During our last meeting, Zionists said that we are calling for the destruction of Israel. However, if they had actually read our resolution, they would see there is nothing about that. The mayor also mentioned that he had an issue with quite a bit of the resolution because we are not just asking for a ceasefire. Yes, of course, we are not just asking for a ceasefire, because if there was only a ceasefire, the people in Gaza would be still suffering from multiple diseases, starvation, and thirst, and homelessness. In our resolution, we asked that humanitarian aid be sent to Gaza. If the mayor or anyone else has an issue with humanitarian aid going into Gaza, please say so, because we will be interested to hear why.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the council?
Hello, my name is Mia Inoue, and my partner, Abdullah Kotit, is a Palestinian business owner in Middletown and a member of the Middletown Mosque. Abdullah owns two businesses here in Middletown, Affordable Medical Transportation and SDS Transportation LLC, and he's owned them for the past four years. He couldn't be here tonight because he had to work, but he asked me to speak on his behalf. Abdullah came here to the US to work so that he could support his family in Palestine. It's been very hard to watch him work long days while knowing that the taxes that he pays to the city of Middletown are being used in part to kill the very people who he is here working to support. This is not beyond the scope of your responsibility as a municipal government, because Middletown tax dollars are funding this ongoing genocide. According to NotMyTaxDollars.org, the city of Middletown spends $387,961 per year to sends that much money per year to Israel to pay for weapons. This is why hundreds of cities, over 100 cities in more than two dozen states across the country, have already passed ceasefire resolutions. Municipal governments don't control our foreign policy, but it is one way that we can show our federal elected officials and the rest of the world where the American people stand on violence and genocide. We stand for peace, safety, and humanity. Abdullah is one of many Muslim and Arab and Palestinian Middletown community members who is directly impacted by the ongoing genocide. As the city council, we ask you to fulfill your responsibility to speak up for these members of the community and to make sure that they know that you value their lives as much as anyone else's. Please join the hundreds of American cities who have passed ceasefire resolutions to show the world where the people of Middletown and the American people stand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Bravon Runga. I'm the political director at For the Many. Our office is at 5 East Main Street here in Middletown, and we represent hundreds of folks in this city. I know you're all familiar with my colleague Vanessa. I really appreciate your time to provide a public comment, and wanted to mention a piece of local housing legislation that we've been advocating around, which is good cause eviction. Municipalities such as Middletown have been empowered by state legislation earlier this year to enact good cause eviction, which is a necessary step to address our housing crisis that's affecting Middletown residents. It would protect certain tenants against unfair evictions and unreasonable rent increases, and would empower them to ask for necessary repairs without the fear of reprisal. It would greatly benefit homeowners in Middletown as well by stabilizing our communities and preventing neighbors from being forced from their homes. Specifically, good cause eviction would give tenants the power to challenge evictions they believe are unfair in court, including lease nonrenewal, and would also require landlords to justify a rent increase greater than 8.5, 4.5% in a calendar year, and be prepared to justify that rent increase to a judge. Good cause eviction does give landlords the power to evict tenants if that eviction's justified. Under the law, a reasonable reason for an eviction would be non-payment of rent, violating the lease, the landlord wishing to recover the unit for personal use, the tenant causing a nuisance or violating the law, or if the owner is selling the building. The law also excludes certain types of units from being covered by good cause, so units built after 2009, owner-occupied buildings, and units with rents above a certain threshold, as well as units belonging to landlords who have a certain number of units in their entire rental portfolio across the state as determined by the municipality. The bill also gives municipalities the ability to adjust two of those exemptions, and it's imperative that Middletown pass the strongest possible version by setting the portfolio size exemption to one unit, which would establish, which would cover as many tenants as possible, and eliminate a potential LLC loophole that corporate landlords could exploit, and setting the high rent exemption at 345% of fair market rent to ensure that only truly luxury units are excluded from the law. So it's obviously a little bit complicated, but we really believe that this piece of legislation is one tool that municipalities will have to address the housing crisis. It won't solve all of our problems, but it's an important step you can take to protect tenants. It does not punish good landlords. It only codifies what good landlords already do into the law, and I urge you to move forward and pass the strongest version possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council? Okay, moving over to the mayor?
Good evening. Really not gonna respond too much to the comments. At the last meeting, I did mention to this group that this is the appropriate body for them if they'd like to come back and express their opinions on international matters, but the, especially in light of the recent killing of the six hostages, that I don't think it's an appropriate time to have a debate about whether Hamas is a victim or a perpetrator here in the Middle East. Also, they need to understand that they're making a request of the common council, not of myself. The decision to hang the Ukrainian flag in the outside of my office door was made by me, under my authority. They're requesting a resolution from you as a body to reflect the whole city's authority. So there's the answer for why the Ukrainian flag is hanging and the concerns about whether we should be getting into international affairs, especially one as high tension as what's going on right now in the world. So I'll leave that at that and continue to stay with my remarks. But to add that, I think over the past two weeks, we have probably received in excess of 500 emails.
5,000.
5,000.
5,000.
5,000 emails. I forgot, I lost the zero. In support of Israel on this. And that's the reason for us to, really not to stick our faces or sticking our noses into this, into this matter at this time. But you do what you like. You know my position. It's been made very clear, but they are welcome to come back each and every meeting, take up their three minutes, and use the time to try to convince people something differently. In regards to good cause eviction, as we stated, the, you know, other communities have been at this a lot longer than us, and I think Newburgh or some of the local communities that have been at this for years and involved in litigation have just recently passed it. So we are continuing to examine it. We're not opposed to it. We have looked at, there's still a lot of questions out there. I understand that there was a group, I don't know if it's the same group that was going door-to-door in some of the apartment complexes over this past week or so, telling tenants that their rent's gonna be raised 10%, or can be raised at 10% or more. But there are also other units that are, my understanding is, that are exempt from this type of legislation. And this is the information and data that we're trying to gather. For example, people going door-to-door in David Moore Heights and Summit Field, those are already affordable income-restricted units. So my understanding is those units are not covered under the good cause eviction legislation. Going into a condo project where the people rent out a condo unit, my understanding is that they are not subject to good cause eviction. There's also legislation, and the gentleman that just spoke regarding that, regarding landlords that hold multiple, own multiple properties, or multiple LLCs, and trying to group them together to whatever restriction that the city may place, say it's 10 units as other communities have done. The litigation is focusing on, or may, and this is just my understanding, and we're trying to verify this, is that that is some, a issue that's being litigated in the courts on whether the 10 units is Andrew Green owning five units here and five units here? Does that count as 10 units? Or is it two separate five-unit buildings, and neither one qualifies under the 10-unit threshold? So the idea that a city or a community would just jump into this, I've spoken to our Corporation Council, he's advised us to move very slowly on this, to, I think we've done that from the beginning, and that we were proven right. The same group, or some of these representatives of this group have been here a year and a half, two years ago, when we said we're treading slowly on this because of the litigation that's pending. Other communities passed things, they were sued, they were overturned. So I think we'll get there in some form, but the, we need to go through a process, we need to get all the accurate information, we need to know what the impacts are on the community, we need to know what the taxpayers' obligations are moving forward, or do we have to have a local board to determine maximum increases on, like ETPA? Is ETPA better than going into the Tenant Protection, the Good Cause Eviction Tenant Protection Act? So we have a lot of work to do, we're doing it. Dr. Johnson and I have spoken, I've shared emails with him of information, and we'll continue to do so at a, as rapid pace as we possibly can. I know some communities have also, out of concern that landlords may anticipate that this may be happening at some point, have then jacked up rent at a unreasonable rate. My understanding is you can go retroactive, back to prior, a year or two years or whatever. I think Kingston itself did that. But these are all things that are subject to litigation. We have to protect our taxpayers, at the same time, protect as many tenants as we possibly can. So we're working in that direction, and I expect to be there within the next couple of months. So I think that's all I have for tonight. You have any questions?
Any question for the mayor? Alderman Johnson?
Two things, mayor, I wanted to--
Yes.
Are you still here? No, I'm here. I want to reinforce, because we've had comments both in the council and from the community, we're not ignoring this. Apparently, I'm told, that legislative will be the gatekeeper, and you've now reiterated from the mayor that it's under consideration, and as soon as they are ready to present a concept, we will meet. So please don't say that because legislative is not meeting, that we're not paying attention to it. Mr. Mayor, I had a question for you, it was really perhaps for the speaker, but we're not really allowed to do that under this protocol. He mentioned that a landlord could reclaim the unit for personal use. Do you know, does that mean if I'm the landlord, I can live it now, or does that mean I could put you out and put somebody in at higher rent?
My understanding of it was that you can reclaim it for a family member, say a son or a daughter, or yourself.
Okay.
But those are all things that need to be clarified as we pass our, and modify our local law. Some of it is not, you're required to be a part of the general law. Others, I think you heard the example of going down to one unit versus 10 units. That is a subjective to you, the common council, and I think the last meeting, a lot of people in the room were in agreement that forcing an owner-occupied, two-family home to be under those guidelines would be a little bit unreasonable. But whatever the threshold is, whether ETPA, I think is either six or eight units, built prior to 1974, this has a threshold of 2009 for units built after 2009 are not covered under this. So, and then we're gonna do a housing inventory to determine how many units are impacted, because a lot of units in Middletown right now fall under the income subsidized category. Tall Oaks, Summit Field, David Moore, College Hill, the old College Hill apartments. So there are a lot of units in this city that would not qualify, to my understanding of the law as I read it now, under the good cause eviction. So another one would be the senior, the senior housing projects. So all of those units would be disqualified under this, from protection under this plan as I read it at this point.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, mayor. Remarks of Department Heads, Economic Development?
This evening, we had a Community Development Agency meeting, and reported that 84 Linden Avenue is just about completed, and hopefully we'll have a new homeowner through our housing program, and we're going to be moving on to another property on Linden Avenue. As you know, this is a housing program that we do through the Community Development Agency, and we offer grants and incentives for folks. We work with Past Stone. We restore the house to, from souk to nuts, basically, the houses are, were either abandoned or taken back for the taxes, and then we restored them, rehabbed them, and there's new homeowners in our community. I think this is going to be our 15th or 16th home that we've done through the program. So we're looking forward to our next home and getting new homeowners in the 84 property soon. Friday, there's a ribbon-cutting, 102 North Street, the former Lounsbury's Nana's Colombian Bakery, so that's at 4 o'clock this Friday. Come help us cut the ribbon and welcome another business to our downtown. We have two more concerts left, this Friday and next Friday, and that wraps up our outdoor series. Farm market is going strong, especially with this year now that we have the SNAP program, and it's been going really strong. And tonight, there's also a resolution before you regarding rail trail commons with a new tenant coming in, Confluence Running. They're looking, it's a specialized shoe and running store, and they're excited to come to downtown and want to move into our city and be part of our community, and I look forward to supporting the resolution tonight so we could get them in, and they'll be ready for the holidays to open. And that's all I have.
Any question for Maria? Alderman Johnson?
It came to my attention recently that you're putting together a steering committee for community campus. Could you just explain what the goal and the mission of that committee would be?
Sure. As you know, we received a BOA grant, Brownfield Opportunity Grant for the Middletown Community Campus, plus an additional funds for planning grant. So with this BOA grant, we need to put together a steering committee, and what the committee is there for is to look at how we're going to spend these funds and what the needs of that particular area, the campus. So, you know, you're gonna have representatives, obviously, of the school, FATN, the city school district, community members, and so we look forward to bringing them all to the table and getting this project going. It's almost like, it's almost like the committee when we had for the DRI--
Okay.
--to see how we are going to, you know, what the vision and goal, vision for that campus is going to be.
And one other brief one, could you define what brownfields are?
Brownfields are from environmental issues on the grounds. So for instance, at the campus is the old power plant. So if, once this plan goes in, the Brownfield Opportunity Grant Plan, and the state approves it, this is gonna open the doors for us to apply for grants to remediate these properties that have any kind of environmental issues.
Thank you.
Correct, mayor. We expanded the target area.
Yeah, we expanded the target area of the BOA to include Summit Field and Tall Oaks--
Oh, okay.
--to kind of that whole area to the city, to the city line, with the possibility of adding, we've already spoken to the Middletown Housing Authority about the possibility of adding some units within the Middletown Housing Authority property, and possibly on some property that the city owns that's adjacent to it. So that'll be part of the study group. They will have representation, ONR will have representation on the board, along with other community campus tenants.
Thank you very much.
Police Chief?
Good evening, once again. Just a few items this evening. Our Night Out Festival was canceled due to the weather. We have it rescheduled for September 28th from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM at Davich Park. Notices went out to all of our vendors, all of our supporters, and hopefully we'll have them join us that day as well. Additionally, we've been working with the school district and some local businesses on a back-to-school, community barbecue event. It is tentatively scheduled for the Saturday, however, the weather is not looking fantastic right now. We are discussing a rain day possibly the following weekend, but as of right now, it is the Saturday, Davich Park, 1 to 5. For our 2nd Ward Alderman, the speed sign has been finally installed and operational. I'm sorry for the delay between vendors, it took us a little bit, but it is up and running. Hopefully, it's positive for your constituents there. And then with school starting this week, please, I remind the public to pay attention. We do have some traffic pattern delays or concerns with some of the construction. I know the school has worked with Department of Public Works and putting out some notifications on that, but parents, please, please plan accordingly, take extra time, anticipate some delays, pay attention to the youth that are walking. We will have extra police officers out, but we definitely do not want any issues. And as with the beginning of school every year, expect some chaos, some delays, just take some time to get back into the rhythm. So I do ask the patience of the parents and cooperation of those. Other than that, I have nothing unless you have for me.
Any question for the police chief? Thank you, chief. TPW Commissioner?
Good evening. We have a few resolutions before you tonight. For your consideration, I will address them if you have any questions about them, otherwise I have no comments. If you have any questions for me?
Any question? All right. Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everyone. Just a update, all of our fall programming is out and registration is up, so I'll just update you on our current fall programs. These are our following paid programming. We have our boxing, youth martial arts, youth art classes, adult pickleball, adult open-play pickleball, youth soccer, youth cheer clinics, adult volleyball, youth music classes, crochet clinic, adult tennis clinics, stroller walk, walks, and a brand-new Brain Power program that's tutoring and homework assistance. That's a new program we're starting. And our free programming is archery, cooking, storytime with Ms. Sharon, teen open gym, youth open gym, and music for the littles. And also a reminder that we are-- And also a reminder that we are, once again, doing a bus trip down to the city to, for the Radio City Rockettes, and it's on Sunday, December, Sunday, December 1st, and it's 1:25 a person. Bus leaves at 11:00 a.m., the show begins at 5:00, 5:00 p.m., and we leave right after the show, the bus picks us up right in front, and we get back into Middletown approximately 9:00 p.m. Any questions?
Any questions for Rayland? All right, thank you. City clerk?
Good evening, just a reminder, we have our third annual, or our third community yard sale coming up on September 14th, there are still openings at Erie Way Park. For those of you who don't know, we are trying, piloting a program this year. If you do not have a house, and you're living in a multi-unit dwelling, or in a condo, or an apartment, you can contact our yard sale signup team through our website, and we'll be able to provide you with a spot at Erie Way Park, so you can take part in the yard sale, the community yard sale as well. So we hope we take, have some takers for that, and we're looking forward to, and hopefully the weather will stick, be positive that weekend. That's it.
Any questions for the city clerk? All right. Petition complaints, there's none. All right, remarks of Aldman, Aldman Tobin.
Just maybe like a point of order, I just, I know we have a lot of speakers recently, I just, I'd ask that you keep it polite and don't make it personal. I know in the past, sometimes we had it, with the power plant and other things, it starts to get real personal, even had people been asked to leave. And I think, I tell my students, not to be condescending, but if you're insulting or yelling at someone, they're not listening to you, so just, I would just try to keep, make sure you keep it respectful.
Aldman Johnson?
Community yard sale, your brainchild, thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Park and Recs? Yes, sir.
And Eileen's.
And Eileen, I'm sorry, I meant to say you as well. Park and Recs, is that all you got? Bravo, bravo. And I am gathered that a belated happy birthday is in order for the chief of police, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Aldman Ray?
Good evening. I want to welcome all the kids back to school tomorrow, on behalf of the community. Your child is not getting off the bus until about 5:00 p.m. And we all need to accept it, because I have graduated a child, and I have three more to go, and there's not been a year where those buses aren't coming in late. We are getting a lot of children home safely, the logistics are monumental, give them time. It's a rough couple of weeks, we're going to get through it, and everything's going to be great, but I hope the kids are ready to go back, because I actually am. My personal feelings aside on the issue you've brought forth today, I have my own, we all have our own. I am not a foreign policy expert, nor am I a Middle East expert. The thing that I'm upset about this evening is the continued approach to our microphone to spread misinformation. This is the problem, this is the equivalent of clickbait, and this is everything that's kind of wrong with a lot of our political discussion these days. To come here and make the claim that Middletown is sending money to Israel is so far off the mark. You know, you walk in here and everyone watches me and goes, oh, Middletown's writing checks to Israel, it's crazy. You come in with a sign that we could be buying something else with that money, that's not Middletown's money. You know, your numbers are obviously based off, you know, the people who reside in Middletown who pay an income tax, which is a federal tax. It is not a city tax. That is not Middletown's money, it does not pass through our accounts, we never see it. Okay? So to come and make that giant misrepresentation is dangerous and reckless, frankly. It shouldn't be done, I don't approve of it. So, you know, you want to come here and share your opinions, you want to speak on the good of the city, good cause eviction, I'm 100% in support of us doing this and doing it right. I don't want to waste taxpayer money by getting ourselves sued, and that's just a waste of money, we'll do it right the first time, we'll do it in a way that protects our tenants, and I'm all on board for that. You want to come here and talk about that, that affects the residents of my city. But to come to that microphone and spread, you know, reckless misinformation, and you accuse Middletown of things that are just patently false, it's concerning for me. And I don't think that that, that this is your forum to do that. Okay? So that's just my feelings on that. After, beyond that, I just, I don't, I want to wrap it up, we've been speaking a lot this evening, so that's really all I have, thank you.
Aldman Kleiner?
Thank you. We have our constituents meeting, it'll be next Monday, September 9th, and Rayland Berthoff, our Parks and Rec Commissioner, has graciously consented to come to her meeting. I know a lot of questions often deal with Davich Park and events going on, and the trails and such, so she'll be able to answer them directly, so if you have concerns, please come out to her meeting. I definitely support good cause eviction, and I hope we don't take too long to get coordinated with what we can do with the state and make it good for Middletown. It's, it's, it's hard to talk about the Middle East. I understand what they're saying when they say this percentage of the federal budget that Middletown pays goes to basically send weapons to Israel, we are the major weapons supplier, and there is such a thing as human rights and war crimes, and we need to be aware of that, and we need to understand what is going on. It's not beyond our purview to actually be concerned about something so horrendous happening in the world. One last thing, I've thought about this a lot, but I think Elon Musk is the biggest coward in this country, and he could do so much to alleviate so much suffering around the world, but no, it's just complaints, so that's another beyond Middletown, but I had to say it. Thank you.
Aldman Green?
Thank you, I do look forward to our constituents meeting on Monday. Thank you, Rayland, for agreeing to come, I know there's going to be some, some good discussion there, so hope to see everyone here at 7:00 p.m. on Monday, the 9th. Also, just again, happy back to school, I've got an anxious, hopefully by now sleeping kindergartner starting tomorrow, so I don't know who's more nervous, me or him, but looking forward to it, and happy back to school, please be patient with everyone. Some schools started today, I got stuck behind a bus, and about 16 cars were honking as a little boy was crying, saying goodbye to his mother for the first time on a bus, so be compassionate, all right? You got it. Thank you.
Okay, Aldman Witt?
Thank you very much, I just wanted to acknowledge the work at the O&amp;W station. It was great to see the photos on social media, and speaking with the mayor a little bit earlier, it was the, it's been universally positive and universally praised, and I go by that area several times a day, and it just, it looks, it looks better already, just to see things happening, and people are excited about it. So that, that's a good thing to me. People are talking about the first day of school tomorrow, sort of piggybacking on everything, and the buses. I can tell you that on the Middletown City School District website, there will be, on the front page and on the Facebook page, there will be each route when they leave, it will say whether they are on time, whether they are five minutes late, and what happens is, is so people know, and thank you Kate for bringing it up, is that a lot of Middletown, the buses, they're, they travel three routes. So you have, the first, the first group goes to the high school and both middle schools, they drop their kids off, then they go back and pick up kids who are going to Carter and Maple Hill, and then they get done with that route, and then they go back and pick up their kids who are going to Presidential Park and Truman Moon, Maple Atlantic's at Truman Moon. So if there is a delay at the high school or the middle school levels, chances are very good, especially on the first day or the first week, that it's going to affect everybody. So for at least the end of this week and into next week if necessary, we will share this information on our website, it'll be, you pop on the website, it'll be right there, and it'll be on Facebook to share, so thank you very much.
Aldman Massey, anything to say? New business.
Good evening, we have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing a proposal from B&amp;L for amendment number five for additional construction administration and observation services for the water system improvement project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Aldman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin authorizing a transfer $10,000 in the police department budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Aldman Witt, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin authorizing a transfer $10,000 in the police department budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Aldman Witt, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner authorizing a $26,652.87 budget transfer from the water fund.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray authorizing a proposal from Accrily and Hubbell Appraisal Corporation for watershed property phase-one appraisals.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, seconded by Aldman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson authorizing a $12,467.95 budget transfer for repairs at the sewer treatment plant.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin appointing Jonathan Scarpetti, Jaden Orocho, and Ricardo Parchment as city Middletown volunteer firefighters.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Aldman Kleiner, any discussion?
Yep. I'm just going to abstain as it came from the fire department from my desk, so, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Thank you for your service, and I.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Abstain.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin authorizing side letter agreements to extend the probationary period for three employees.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Aldman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.